Hello and welcome to the Monday, February 26th Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The time is officially 6:30 PM. If we can stand, if you are able, for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mrs. Lavelle, if we could have a roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Doring?
Here.
Ms. Passeretti? Mrs. Reynus?
Here.
Dr. Reed? Ms. Regan?
Here.
Dr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Risaci?
Here.
Mr. Votto? Seven members present and voting.
Thank you so much. I would now like to invite our student representatives to come up. First, we have Haley from Lyman Hall. Welcome. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you again for having us this evening. We started off February, well, actually, January, from the first to 11th. We had our cap and gown ordering, that students were able to order their cap and gowns from that time. The fifth to the ninth was a school counselor appreciation week. So, like, every day, a student would say something nice about their counselor over the announcements. There was an after-school application workshop from at the sixth, on the sixth. The seventh, we had advisory, which followed a special bell schedule. On the eighth, we had a two-hour early release, which also followed a special bell schedule. And the ASTE Acceptance Students' Day was also then. The ninth, there was a job shadow for plumbers and pipe fitters. The thirteenth, we had another after-school application workshop in the school counseling office. The fifteenth, the Lyman Hall PTAC was in the Library Media Center at 7:00 PM. The sixteenth, we had early release for winter break, which followed a special bell schedule. The nineteenth, we had President's Day, so there was no school. The twentieth to the twenty-third was FFA Week, which the Ag kids would have, like, spirit days, and it was just an appreciation week for them. The 21st first, we had office hours, which followed a special bell schedule. The 22nd was the Q3 interim, and the, another after-school application workshop on the 27th. And on Friday, March 15th, from 5:00 to 8:00, our culinary arts program will host a Mediterranean pop-up shop at the library restaurant in town. There, they will be providing restaurant-style dining, as well as operating the district food truck. We are also excited to start our spring sports the 16th of March. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now, if we can invite Leah and Emma from Mark T. Sheen. Thanks so much for being here with us.
Thank you for having us. So, this past week, going on to March 5th, we have our boxed food drive. So, we had a canned food drive at the beginning of the year. That was pretty successful. So, we're doing a boxed food drive now. From March 5th to the 18th, our counselors are meeting with all freshmen individually to plan classes for next year. On March 6th, we'll have an advisory bell schedule and a mock CPR AED drill. We also have an attuned school approach parent seminar in the Sheen Auditorium at 6:00 PM. On the eighth, we have our third and final blood drive of the year, which has been super productive and very, everyone likes it at school, so we're excited for that. We also have on the eighth, the Titans on Broadway in the Sheen Auditorium at 7:00 PM. On March 9th, our spring sports preseason begins, which is for baseball and softball. On the 12th, we have our Class of 2024 volleyball tournament, where all students can create their own teams. And it's after school, and we do a tournament, so each team can play two times, and that raises money for the senior class. On March 13th, there's no school, and it's a professional development day. On the 15th is our spring musical, which is Newsies this year, at 7:00 PM. And we're also going to be wearing green for Spirit Day, for St. Patrick's Day, which we will earn Spirit points for. And on the 16th, we have two shows for Newsies, one at 2:00 and one at 7:00. And then, the spring sport preseason begins for golf, lacrosse, tennis, and outdoor track.
On March 18th, we are having our district-wide invention convention, where students get to present inventions and ideas that they have been creating over the past few months. On the 19th, we will have a military fair during lunch waves, where students can learn more about how to get involved with our military. On March 22nd, the Class of 2026 will be having a spikeball tournament, which is similar to our class volleyball tournament, where students of all grades can sign up to play spikeball in a tournament-like competition. The proceeds from the entrance fees and concession stand will go to the Class of 2026. On the 26th, the third marking period ends, and we enter the last marking period of the school year. The following day is SAD testing day for all juniors, and that night, there will be a Power of Parents Substance Abuse Program for all parents in the district, and it will be hosted at Lyman Hall. Lastly, in March, on the 29th, there will be a career exploration program for teen girls at the public library. Lastly, I would just like to mention two events that our school put on recently, our school clubs more specifically, that were very big successes. A few weeks ago, the National Honor Society hosted our first-ever Inclusion Cotillion, which was a prom-like event for students in our ABC program, which is the Special Needs Program at Sheen. These students were able to experience the music and dancing of prom while remaining in a sensory-inclusive environment. Members of the National Honor Society and ABC program were able to form new connections, which fosters a sense of positivity and inclusivity within our school. Chick-fil-A sponsored this wonderful event, which we are now hoping will become an annual occurrence. Lastly, this past Friday, the Student Council held our first-ever Sheen Family Feud, which Emma and I hosted. Students were polled prior to the event to come up with answers to questions such as, what is the best cafeteria food, what is the best breakfast place in Wallingford, and many more. At the event, teams from different grade levels competed against each other to win Spirit points, and the game brought our school together in, like, a fun and interactive environment. And if anyone's interested, it is posted on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all three of you. Haley, I have to say, when you said cap and gown ordering, I'm like, oh geez, we're already here, right? This year is flying by. And as you guys are talking about, you know, the military coming in and future planning, it's such an exciting time, so I really appreciate you coming and sharing. And I will just, I think probably the board would echo these sentiments. The Cotillion sounds incredible, so I do hope that that becomes an annual thing. So, thank you so much. You are welcome to stay for our meeting, but I'm sure you're busy, homework and things like that. So, feel free to leave whenever you need to. Thank you so much for being here. And Superintendent Belizzi, I don't believe we have any awards or presentations this evening. So, moving right along to public comment. I'm going to read our public comment statement. "The Board of Education welcomes you to our meeting, as we always look forward to public input." "Before we begin, we want to review the process of comments and questions for this evening, for this meeting." "These terms are per the policies of 9323 and 1120." "Public comment is intended for Board of Education as an entity and not individual Board members, as individual members do not have decision-making authority." "Public comment is intended to allow citizens to comment and ask questions. These will either be answered during this meeting or at a later date by the superintendent if additional research or materials are required." "We ask that everyone behaves in a respectful way that sets a great example for our students that we all wish to serve." And with that, I'm happy to open up public comment. Is there anyone in the room that is here for public comment? Okay, if you just excuse me, we have someone that would like to have something read into the record. Mr. Daring?
Thank you. This is from Ms. Kathy Castelli. "I watched all the budget meetings and feel I have to address something that occurred at the last meeting. It was suggested that a staff position be moved from strategic to sustained. This position does not exist in the sustained budget today. Yes, that position does exist in 11 of our 12 schools, but in one school it does not exist. While that may seem quite odd to Board members and the public, there are reasons for it. That is why this position must be labeled as strategic, as it was when presented to the Board by Ms. Belizzi. The dollars to cover this position do not currently exist in the sustained budget, and the sustained budget should only contain what exists now. One exception to this practice is a movement of crossing guards from the police budget to the BOE as decided by the mayor. That, of course, has to be part of the sustained budget figure. The mayor and most town council members are very familiar with the Board's sustained and strategic terms and understand what they each represent. The sustained budget proposal tells the mayor and TC the percentage of funds needed to keep things as they are now. If they decide to give less than that figure, they know the Board will have to cut existing programs, services, and/or staff. Each year, when the town council approves a final figure for the Board of Education, that figure becomes a new sustained budget number. That Board needs to take that amount and determine how the dollars will be spent. If the number approved by the town council is greater than the requested sustained amount, those extra dollars can be used for strategic items the Board prioritized. Remember, the mayor and the town council cannot dictate to the Board how the dollars are to be spent. They supply the amount, and the Board decides how to use it. While the bottom-line figure requested, which combines both sustained and strategic dollars, is not impacted by the move that was made from strategic to sustained, I implore you to please do not bastardize the budget distinction the Board of Education developed 15 years ago and has worked hard to keep unadulterated. Sustained means existing. Strategic means additional. Please reverse your sustained and strategic numbers back to where they were before this unwitting decision to move an unfunded position from strategic to sustained was made. The total amount remains the same. It's just correcting the buckets. I'm hoping someone will request some discussion Monday night before the final vote to approve the budget request, and that you will decide to undo this change I was made. It's the right thing to do. Good luck moving forward." "Respectfully, Kathy Castelli, former BOE member."
Thank you, Mr. Daring, and thank you, Mrs. Castelli, for your input and your continuation and your support and following to the Board of Education. Is there any other public comment here? Okay, so with that, I will close public comment. We are now moving on to item number seven, the Consent Agenda. One item Board members, 7.11, was requested to be pulled from consent. So, we will handle that in a moment. But with that being said, I would like to make a motion to improve Consent Agenda items 7.1 through 7.10 and 7.12 through 7.16. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries. And now, we will move on to items removed from the Consent Agenda. This was item 7.11, Approval of Proposed Adoption and Revision of the Bylaw 9323, Agenda Construction and Meeting Materials. And Mrs. Risaci, you were the one that asked for this to come off, so I'll let you start the discussion.
Thanks, Dr. Roscoe. So, although we had a lot of discussion regarding this in our subcommittee meeting, someone had brought to my attention that it seems there may be a sentence or two left out in regard to when the public receives the materials, that it has been addressed when the Board will receive the materials. But based on the language that's in there now, it seems as if the copies of materials and presentations will be placed online 24 hours after presented at the meeting. There was language previously that's stricken on the first page of the policy that talks about the public receiving the information 24 hours in advance, and agendas will be made available to the public. And we didn't carry a sentence over to talk about the public in the new policy. So, I'm just asking if we can have a sentence or two related to the public receiving the information in advance and not 24 hours after the meeting is over.
So, Ms. Risaci, I don't read it the same way you do, but I will agree with you that it is not exactly clear. So, if you look on the bottom of page two, it does speak to the agenda being posted at Town Hall, the admin offices, and the Board's website. "Any associated documents that may be reviewed by members of the Board at such meeting shall be posted on the Board's website, provided such documents are not exempt from disclosure." So, by nature, any associated documents are put on the website, which is a public, has public access. So, copies of the presentations will continue to be that 24 hours. I can certainly add, you know, in that first line where it starts, the shaded piece of it?
Yes.
"Any associated documents that may be reviewed by members of the Board and public at such meeting"
That would be great.
"shall be posted," just for clarity purposes. But we have always, just, you know, since the public's watching, we have always put in that backup folder on the Board's website any material, any handout, that would be discussed at any one of our meetings, whether it's an instructional committee, policy committee, operations, full board, so that the public has view of any of the handouts at the time that the agenda is posted. The only thing that we've kept separate from that is a copy of the presentation that would be done within the 24 hours.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think it's just semantics.
Sure.
It's just putting that in there, I think, makes the public feel better that they'll still have that same level of access that they have now.
Yep.
The person that brought it to my attention actually ironically pulled it off what was posted on the website. So, clearly, we are still posting it, but I think just adding those couple of words will make the public feel at ease that they'll have the same access to materials that they do now.
Sure. So, since you pulled it off of consent, what you'll need to do is, and you can do that this evening, so that everything can continue on the same timeline, would be just to agree as a Board that the additional verbiage of, by members of the Board and the public, would be added to this edit, and then you would take a vote, and it would still then proceed as its final read and can be adjusted for from this point forward.
Do I need to make a motion, or Marla, do you make a motion?
I just want to make sure no one has any other questions or discussion before we move forward, and then I'm happy to have you make a motion. Does anyone have anything else about this? No? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the posting of the agenda on page two to include the public as well as members of the Board that will receive access to any associated documents.
And, second. And then, Mrs. Lavelle, can we have a roll call, please? Just to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynus?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Risaci?
Yes.
And Dr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thanks for that discussion, and I'm glad we were able to get that clarity, so that everyone feels comfortable. Okay. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda, it's the correspondence. Mr. Daring, I'll pass it over to you.
We have a acknowledgement of two gifts. We have a gift from the Alex Charitable Trust to Rock Hill School 5th Grade for $5,000. And the other gift that we have is from an anonymous donor to Dag Middle School Kindness Squad for $10,000. We are very appreciative of both of these gifts.
Thank you so much. Okay. We are now going to move to our committee reports. So, we'll first start with item 10.1, Systemwide PTAC. Mrs. Latour, I'll give it over to you.
So, we had our systemwide PTAC meeting just last week, and it was a meeting really to touch base, because it had been a while since the entire committee had met. So, there was a review of community events. Mrs. Turner led a discussion as well about next steps after Chris Heron's presentation in terms of substance abuse awareness. There was an agenda item brought forward from the local high school PTACs regarding AP courses and when they run, and when it's decided that they don't run or that they're deleted from the course guide. And then, there were some continued discussions about where PTAC was going in terms of agenda items in the future. So, Brian Revard, the chairperson, again appealed to the local PTAC representatives to bring forward to systemwide PTAC topics of interest, so that the systemwide group can hone in on different topics that they could work on as a group. And minutes were taken at the, they're on the agenda. That's posted on our Board website, and our next meeting is in March.
I'll pass it now to you, Mrs. Turner, for our Special Education PTAC update.
Good evening. On February 7th, Christina Dagiston, from Moses Y. Beach, our school psychologist, ran a Special Education PTAC meeting, where she did yoga and mindfulness for parents of students with special needs, and how to use that with your children as well. And many of the parents actually discussed possibly having her do a small group with them on a regular basis, which was fantastic. When, this Wednesday, February 28th, we will have our third parent support group meeting. We've had a regular group of parents attending, which is fantastic. We are looking at moving that to an alternative locations. I believe this Wednesday it's at the library, but we will be sending home communication to families. And our next Special Education PTAC event is April 16th. We're going to have our third annual Special Education Resource Fair, and we already have 15 vendors confirmed. And we're still looking for more and information for parents to come. That is April 16th, 6 o'clock, at Mark T. Sheen. So, it should be a wonderful event.
Thank you so much for the updates. Moving to item 10.3, Food Services. Mr. Bondi, do you have an update for us?
So, our committee met on January 30th, and we discussed concerns about student food waste at breakfast and plans from Highland School to donate unused food. We discussed methods to increase breakfast participation in the middle schools, and we had an informational update on the difficulties of student meal charges and principal accounts. It was a very good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Could you tell us how we're going to share the excess food?
Mr. Bondi, would you like me to speak to that?
Sure.
Sure. So, there's been a pilot program that's been happening at Highland School. Some very passionate, dedicated teachers have taken it upon themselves to start to collect the unused food and have basically procured a courier through a parent, and they drop it off to Master's Manor. It's about somewhere around, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, 15 pounds of food on average a day, with the way the free breakfast is setting. And so, they're also taking the initiative to bring this program to other schools if they're interested, and even working with some other church organizations to see if they can facilitate more schools getting involved, also trying to bring back some of the shared tables and things like that. But once it leaves, just to be clear, we know, we learned this in our Food Service Committee meeting, once it leaves the cafeteria, it is no longer under the purview of Mr. Bondi. And so, all of this has to come from, you know, the initiative of other people who are passionate about reducing waste, kind of from the school faculty.
Thank you so much. It's an amazing program.
Yeah, it's really, it's really exciting. It's really amazing. So, I hope that did it justice, Mr. Bondi. Okay. Dr. Thompson, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Report.
Yes, so the town, Wallingford Town, racial justice team met on February 8th, and there's going to be an event on February 28th that the community is invited to at the library. Registration's available on the library website. It's a community conversation about race and our town. And the community is encouraged to sign up and attend. These are done on a regular basis, and they're well-attended and really great conversation, sharing different views in a respectful and productive manner.
Thank you so much. And item 10.5, the CAPE Report. Mr. Daring?
Nothing to report from CAPE this month.
And moving to item number 11, that is our old business. We do not have any, so moving right along. That puts us at executive session. I would like to make a motion for the Board of Education to go into executive session with Superintendent Belizzi for the purpose of discussing real estate matters and leave of absence. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. We are in executive session. Thank you. We are now back from executive session and moving right along in our meeting to Agenda Item Number 13. I'm going to pass it over to you, Dr. Reed.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that a leave of absence for Erin Berthold be approved without pay and in accordance with the provisions of the current teacher's contract from March 22nd, 2024, through the end of the school year. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you very much. Now, moving to our Operations Committee. I'll pass it right over to you, Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Reynus.
Good evening. So, the Operations Committee met on Monday, February 12th. It was one of our shorter meetings. There wasn't a whole lot to discuss. One of the one items of note, though I did want to point out, was that there was a substantial increase, or a substantial decrease, I should say, in our surplus. And this was, there's two drivers to this. This is the tuition increases, and the second piece of this is the excess cost adjustment, which is something that the state provides back to us. And for the public's, just to let you know that this has been out in the news a lot, that the state of Connecticut, there has been some substantial increases in outplacement of intuitions, and that has driven up some of our monthly cost in terms of tuitions. As far as, oh, that is not the one. This was the special education? This was the special, we saw a dramatic increase in special education increases, and that's what drove up our monthly cost for tuition. But the state of Connecticut is still on the hook for theirs too, but...
You're correct, though, about the excess cost.
But the excess cost adjustment is also...
So, that decreased, which increased our tuition costs.
Okay. So, that is the driver of this monthly increase that we've seen. So, now, our surplus is down to $243,000. And then, we covered the regular reports, the financial reports. We received an update from Mr. Deptula on the field, so everything went well. Moving on to number 14.2. We're going to talk about the budget. I am going to make a motion to approve the 2024 to 2025 budget in the amount of $120,971,735. This is an increase of 6.52%. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I am going to open this up for discussion.
I wanted to take Kathy Castelli's point and have a discussion in regard to switching that back to the other part of the budget and take it out of sustained and put it into strategic. What she said made a lot of sense, and I have great respect for Kathy and her longstanding work on the Board, so I would like to have a discussion in regard to moving it.
I do have a question about that position. This is, the position that's in question is the part-time nursing assist, health office. It's a helmo, it's a health office aide, if I'm not mistaken.
It's a health office assistant. It's part-time.
It's a health office assistant. This is for Pontill?
Correct.
And has this position ever been at Pontill?
So, prior to COVID, no. And we do have another elementary school that does not have a health office assistant, but by choice.
Okay.
And so, the one at Pontill was not there prior to COVID, and that was by choice. Then, when COVID, when the pandemic hit, not just because we had funding, but because we had all those additional requirements for every single school, we used some of the funding to have additional health office assistants at all of our schools because they were needed at that particular moment. And we've continued that because we've had the funding to continue to do so. And so, this was a request that, to continue it, because then it has now seen the value and a value add to the position that we have there with the nurse. And most of our schools do have that. So, to Kathy Castelli's point, and the way we've done it in the past, is it has been something that has been added as a strategic item, because it's something new. While we currently have it, we're using pandemic funding for it. And so, that funding will end, and so that's why we brought it up this way as a strategic item.
And I'm fine with moving it back into the, from sustained to strategic. I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure that the position, that when we go to discuss positioning and when we do get our budgets, that we don't overlook this position. Because I do think that this is extremely important and that we show equality and equity between all our schools. And so when this comes up, you know, and God willing, we get our entire budget funded, and then we don't have to worry about that. But in the, in the case that we don't get our complete funding, that this, I do think that this position needs to be a priority, so. But I'm happy to go ahead and change it back to it. And I don't know that we need necessarily a motion to do that. I do think, is that something that we can just discuss in the operations meeting when we present it back to the town? That will be something that we can change back in operations when we go back on the twelfth.
I think, though, we're presenting to the mayor before that.
We are, so our may
We're just, I mean, the request isn't, we're requesting the same amount. So I, I don't know that it's a, I think we, we're okay to
Okay.
present the, the change you recommend to reduce, moving the piece, that position to the strategic.
I, I do think, since you took a motion to put it in, from the strategic budget into the sustained budget, I think you need to take a motion to take it out of the sustained budget to put it back in the strategic.
All right.
The overall cost of the total budget is going to be the same.
So let's take, let's finish off the motion for this one, which is the approval of the entire amount. And then we'll go ahead and make a second motion that will put it back, that will change the buckets in which it's in. Okay, does that make sense? All right, is there any more discussion on the approval of the budget as presented this, the whole number, the hundred and twenty million, which is the six point five seven two percent increase? Mr. Ross, you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question on the approval of the budget. And you mentioned a hundred and twenty million, nine hundred and seventy-one, seven thirty-five. And you said it was six point seven?
No, it's six point five seven two.
Five, okay. Just want to make sure of that.
Yep. Are there any other questions about this? Have no more questions? Mrs. Lavelle, can you do a roll call for me, please?
Mr. Daring?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainus?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosaci? And Dr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And Mr. Barone, can you just, I just want to see exactly what that position, can you tell me again how much I, it was? I don't think it matters, but, all right. So what I will do is make a second motion to the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget to remove the position for the health office assistant from the sustained, to put it back into the strategic.
Correct.
This does not change the overall amount. It just changes the strategic and the sustained amounts. And Mrs. Lavelle, oh, do I have a second on that?
Second.
And can I please get a roll call for that, Mrs. Lavelle?
Mr. Daring?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainus?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosaci?
Yes.
And Dr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item is the approval of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Food Services Budget. This is for revenues in the amount of two million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and expenditures in the amount of two million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
And can I, do we need a roll call for this one? I don't think so. So we'll just say, everybody in favor of this, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next, the next item is the approval for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five capital requests in the amount of two million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? And the motion carries. Next item is fourteen point five. This is the discussion and the approval of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school calendar. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Can I, everybody in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Then the motion carries. And the last item, fourteen point six, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to give Doc, Mrs. Belizzi the authority, I guess, we'll say, to move ahead with the real estate matter as discussed in the executive session to bring that forward to Town Council with regards to the adult education program. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. And can everybody in the favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of those changes and the thoughtful discussion, so thank you. Superintendent Belizzi, I'd like to give you the floor for your administrative report.
Thank you. Just a few additional things to share this evening. Since we just finished talking about the budget, I'll start with that first. Just to give everyone a timeline as to where we are. So now that we have a Board of Education-approved budget, Mr. Barone, myself, Dr. Roscoe, will meet with the mayor, Mayor Savoni, and Tim Senna from the town to go over the budget that you just approved. And that will be on March sixth, I believe. So we will give a presentation to the mayor, allow him to ask questions of what you all just approved and the details in terms of the sustained, the strategic, and also what the capital items are. Because remember, the capital items are separate from the overall budget. Then on or about April first, we'll get a phone call. I believe that's how he'll do it this year. That's how it's been done in the past, to let us know what the overall budget will be and if there are any capital items that he is recommending for funding. And then we'll continue our process after that with Town Council presentation in April. And then we'll move forward with discussions from there as a full board as to what we received and what we're going to fund. And typically, we approve the budget on or around, I usually say Memorial Day weekend. So it's just the start of a long process to go. But we'll see how it goes moving forward. A lot of towns are in the same boat where we are in terms of what they're asking for, in terms of our percentage for overall requests. I do have a document that I can share with all of you with in our DURG of what all of the towns are sharing as to what they're requesting from their boards and then going forward. And they are very similar, especially the districts that are of our size are in the same percentage a month where we are. So we're not alone in where we are right now, with some of our big drivers being the cost of the insurance has gone up, salaries, we know personnel benefits, big piece of our budget. So those are some things to think about along with the things that Mrs. Regan had mentioned earlier. Just a couple of highlights. Invention Convention was mentioned earlier. This year, it's going to be at Mark T. Sheen High School. It's going to be on March eighteenth, so we're looking forward to that. So I wanted to highlight that event as we go forward. And I know I may see many of you this weekend at the mayor's ball, so we're looking forward to that as well, as we welcome Mayor Savoni in. And so I know our student reps had shared a lot of things that are already happening in the district, so I don't want to repeat them, but we have a lot of good things going on, so.
Thank you so much. It's always good to repeat the good things we have going on. We love to hear those. Now we have a couple of announcements, and I just want to make a clarification that I believe that the Instructional Committee and the Operations Committee are via Google Meet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
They're both going to be Google meets.
On our, on our posted agenda, it does say in the Board of Ed Conference Room, so I just want to be abundantly clear that we will be meeting for our Instructional Committee on Monday, March fourth. And that'll be at six P M via Google Meet. And on Tuesday, March twelfth, for Operations Committee, also at six P M via Google Meet. Our next meeting here in the Town Hall Chambers is Monday, March twenty-fifth, and that will be at six thirty P M. And I think that is it. So with no other business to come before this board, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.